Welcome to the meeting. It's July 29 at 7:04 PM. Adjustments to the agenda. I would like to make one adjustment to modify Agenda Item Number Eight, which is a Communications Union District, to be an action item instead of a discussion item. We need to make a decision this evening that would help us to either move forward with some funding now or not. So it's time sensitive. We'll add it to the agenda. Any other adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none. Again, welcome. We continue to meet remotely. We'll do our best to still be effective in this way. Certainly, my experience so far with our staff is that they've been handling this quite well and have been effective, so I guess there's no reason we can't be as well. Opportunity for public comment. Hearing none. Move on to minutes of the June 2020 meeting that were enclosed in your packet.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Who was the second?
Richard Noel.
Or is taking the minutes as long as you know. Perfect. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Item Agenda Number Five, Upper Lake Champlain Basin Plan. Is Karen on?
I am. Here I am.
Great. Would you like to introduce her, please, Catherine?
You have to unmute, Catherine.
Or I can. So Karen is here to speak with us. She is the watershed coordinator. This is a presentation and action item. There are draft comments enclosed. Karen is going to give us a brief overview, and then we can discuss as the committee.
All right. Great.
Would you like to present something?
Yes, so I'm going to share my screen.
Your screen is up.
Okay, here we go. So, thanks for your time. I will present fairly briefly on the Northern Lake Champlain Direct Drainages Tactical Basin Plan. It's in draft form right now. We're in the public comment period, and that will end December, or December, August 7th. So any comments that we receive by August 7th will then be considered in the finalization of the plan. I'll provide you information at the end of the presentation as to how you can provide those comments. If you otherwise have comments, questions about the plan that you just would like to ask me, feel free to do that through the presentation or email me, give me a call. I'm quite happy to talk with people about the plan and the condition of surface waters in this area. So this is a plan to protect and restore lakes, ponds, and rivers of the wetlands. It's, or our tactical basin plans are our guides for the state and partners in protecting our surface waters. And the one thing that, let's see. Sorry. So this is, this is a story map that is located on the Basin Five website, and you can Google that, Vermont DEC Basin Five will get you to that site. And the links that are in this plan then will be avail, in this presentation will be available to you through the website. So the only thing I have problem now is the Zoom people are on my right, are my, let's see if I can, where I need to go. Here we go. I can use another button. So, State of Vermont manages surface waters by developing tactical basin plans for the 15 basins that make up the state. Most of those are large river basins like the Mississauga and Lemoyle in this area. And then otherwise, there are a couple of basins that sort of have the smaller drainages like this one. This basin itself is, stretches from the northern part of Ferrisburg all the way up to the islands and Swanton. The smaller drainages include Shelburne Bay, Burlington Bay, Malice Bay, St. Albans Bay, the Northeast Arm, and the bays around the islands. Because the basin drains to Lake Champlain, this plan also feeds into our overall plan for protecting Lake Champlain. And there's more about it in this power, the storybook. After the slideshow, I'll let, show you what we have sort of down below for resources. It will give you a better sense of how we will use this to contribute to showing reduced flows to Lake Champlain. The planning process, it's a five-step process. We look at the water quality, the assessment, and then the idea is then to work with partners to plan, develop strategies, and then we also track progress. Water quality is looked at in terms of the chemistry in the water quality and how that relates to the Vermont water quality standards. And we also look at the biology, what's living there. Do they live in a surface water that's going to be degraded, or do we expect them to be in a pristine watershed? In addition, we look at the physical characteristics, you know, is a stream actually in equilibrium, meaning there's not a lot of erosion, or is it trying to find sort of a new platform it's going to, where there is a lot of erosion? With all that data, then, we identify sort of two categories. What are we going to protect? What are we going to restore? With regard to protection, the focus is to protect those areas that are close to pristine conditions. We don't want to lose those. We can't recreate those again. And we want to make sure that the values they provide, like recreational opportunities, wildlife habitat, are protected. The process for protecting them is actually then having, going through a process where we reclassify or designate them so officially they are established as sort of near pristine or have very high-quality waters, which means that when they go through, let's say, a permitting process, it is happening within their watershed, then their goal is not to treat it like any other water, but they have to ensure that the development is going to protect the water at its current status. What should we restore? Well, if it's decreed by a stressor that leads to release of pollutants, then we want to ensure that we can protect or restore so that we can have those uses and values of that surface water. This is an interactive map that you'll be able to explore where exactly those waters are. You can also find those in the plan on Table Two, Three, and Seven. In terms of protection, or in restoring, we really look at land use. We want to manage land use so that we don't have that, those stressors that then result in the release of pollutants. And to that end, then, when we look at, develop the strategies and sort of group them together, we group them together by land use. So agriculture, the developed land, silviculture, and then we also look at how natural resources could be protected to further enhance protection of the watershed, not just for the pristine, but just to maintain what we have that's good and meets water quality standards. In addition, we do have one point source that we address. We look at wastewater and how we treat that, and those have a permit requirement, so it's how we assist in ensuring that those permit required requirements are met without too much burden to the municipality. So, strategies. When we develop the strategies, we're working with partners, and the idea is that we're trying to figure out how to best direct our resources, the educational efforts that we do, or the technical outreach that we provide, or the financial assistance. And because in the end, what we're trying, what we need to do is, is ensure that community members can meet regulatory requirements, or that they can also address stressors through voluntary actions. If you want the very specific, to see all the strategies that we have, you'd go to Table 21 of the plan. What I'll do now is actually go through each sector and provide a general description of the approach we take for each sector. Agriculture. Well, the, most of the agricultural activity is, protections are addressed under the required agricultural practices, and the idea is to help assist in compliance with those, but also to help producers go above and beyond that for the best management practices. The general approach or the focus that we take in providing resources is to ensure that there's reduction of erosion off fields, that you're managing stormwater off of barnyards and production areas, and that if you can't manage what's coming off directly, then make sure you have sort of the secondary level of protection through an enhanced riparian buffer before it gets to the stream. And then also nutrient management, this idea that if you don't, if the nutrients go to the field to grow the crop, let's make sure it just does that, you don't need any more. So in addition to encouraging certain practices, we also look at, well, how do we apply those? And the, in working with the agricultural partners, one of the ideas was that we need somebody who goes to one service provider, like NRCS, might not know about what other providers are able to assist them with. And so NRCS perhaps, and they've actually, Danny Pete suggested this at NRCS and Williston, that they then learn maybe additional or are able to provide the information about what other producers or providers may be providing. So that's something that will help support cross-training. Also that, in terms of providing incentives, let's provide a, there's an award program that Agency mag already has set up, so to encourage that and any others. Then you got roads. This is all, there's the municipal road general permit, which you know very, all know well it well. Again, so it's just making sure that compliance is easy to meet, support the road, road erosion inventories, and when those are done, that there's support for towns so that they can fix those high-priority roads. And then in addition, there's always a need for technical assistance on culvert installation, road maintenance. And then the developed land also has parking lots, sidewalks, and the, the approach there is again to manage stormwater, but through prioritizing projects. So for those urbanized communities like St. Albans, you have the flow restoration of phosphorus control plans. The idea is to assist with the municipalities with implementing those. Communities that aren't large enough or dense in, the population isn't dense enough to require those, then we've helped and assisted with the development of strong-water master plants, which basically just prioritize projects and then install implementation is based on voluntary effort, so there's financial assistance there as well. And then with the back, you know, the residential homeowner, efforts to help them implement best management practices so they can address stormwater off their property, private roads, there are enough of those, and also to provide technical, financial assistance to help them voluntarily manage the runoff of those roads. And then in addition, it's not all about phosphorus and sediment. Their chloride concentrations have been increasing in at least the urbanized streams, and so we have always encouraged and will continue to help encourage education and outreach that's going to help municipalities or private landowners to reduce the amount of chlorides they use through better winter ice management. First three strategies. Well, there you've got silviculture, so where that happens, make sure stormwater runoff again is not a problem by managing the logging roads and the load landings appropriately. Also, we've always encouraged the skidder bridge use. That will continue, although now instead of asking them or encouraging them to rent, we are now encouraging them to own with, but providing resources to make that happen. And then outside of that, natural resources are also a way to protect what we have, and so support forestland conservation where that's possible. Where's water treatment strategy? So this, again, this is a point source. It's not stormwater runoff, except if you look at urban areas where you might have overflows because of CSOs. But at any rate, I mean, the whole goal there, which you all know about again, is to assist in upgrading those facilities where permit, permits require that, and then also to help them optimize phosphorus removal from wastewater. In areas where you may not have a wastewater treatment facility, but you have individual sites, residential sites or lots that do not have proper, our capability to properly manage wastewater, then to assist the community or individuals with ensuring that there is a way to manage that. And that one of the new programs we have is a village wastewater, and that will look to help communities actually use onsite wastewater systems for smaller community, or community sites for wastewater. But again, this is also like with Malice Bay, this would be to help encourage or help them financially with any efforts to extend the sewer line. Natural resource river, resource protection for rivers, again, how can we ensure that the river can sort of meet equilibrium so it doesn't have to continue to erode? So the, the approach there is to encourage shoreline reforestation, help make sure those floodplains are happening and working, and restore them where they aren't, and removal of dams where landowners are willing. Wetland strategies. This is an area where runoff from the landscape, which might carry phosphorus, can actually settle, and we basically then can divert it from the rivers, from the lakes. So where can we restore wetlands? Where can we conserve it? And also, as I said before, where you have wetlands that are near pristine condition, let's reclassify so that they get the protection they need to maintain those functions that they provide at that higher level. Strategies. Well, if you've got the land around the lake, you want it to be forested where it can be, where you've got camps and other developments. Let's see how we can encourage reforestation, increase buffer, and, and then also reduce, address the erosion from the parking, the driveways, the rooftops, so that we reduce the amount of sediment going into the, into the lake and the phosphorus with it. And in addition to that, then, we've always had programs to help with aquatic invasives. You know, basically, it's where they exist, we help communities manage them so that they can recreate, and where they don't exist, then we put a lot of efforts to helping reduce the introduction of those aquatic efforts. Projects that address strategies. So, we got the strategies. Now we need the specifics, what exactly can be done and will be done based on communication with other partners, with landowners. This is an example of a project that was done last, or from the previous plan, it was in the previous plan, and it was just finished last year on Indian Brook. There was the Mill Pond Dam, and that was removed with the help of the Nature Conservancy, and it's now, has improved aquatic habitat, but also reduced sediment flowing to Malice Bay. These projects can be found through the Clean Water Portal and the Watershed Projects Public comments. Make sure that you, what you have to say is accurately documented. If you could email them to this email, anr.basin5comments@vermont.gov, or you can send them to me, karenbates@basin5comments111weststreet. All this information is on the Basin Five website. If I get them by 4:30 August 7th, they will be reviewed and considered in the finalization of the basin plan, and in addition, they will become part of the responsiveness summary where we explain how each comment has been addressed. So, that's the basin plan, and the rest of this story map is for you to explore unless there's, there are quite specific questions. It's going to include more on the basin planning process. My coworker, Daniel Azarsky, created the story map on basin planning in general. If you want to learn more about the TMDL, there's this great, what would you call it? Cartoon-type explanation of it, the Lake Champlain Basin Program pulled together. And also, there's explanation of how Basin Five, strategies in Basin Five are going to help work towards implementing the TMDL. Not only how, what we expect for phosphorus load reduction from each of the sectors in Basin Five, but we're also explaining in Chapter Four especially, how, what we've done to date, how we're helping to implement those strategies that are going to ensure that the permit programs are, are going to be, are going to be implemented. What do I want to say? But anyway, that the work that needs to be done to meet permit requirements will be done, which will then result in the phosphorus reduction that EPA is expecting us to, to show. In addition, for a lot more fun, you can go down to this page in the story map where we've actually, I'm showing you these Microsoft Power BI's, which you have to think about. There's a whole lot of data behind then a presentation, and there are actually four slides here showing different aspects of agricultural data, meaning how these different practices like continuous corn can result in phosphorus loading to the, to the bay or to the watershed, but also what can happen if you were to then take a practice like, let's say, cover crop. What you would, what, how it's been adopted in the basin over time, 2015 to 2019, there's been a steep increase in use. And then much more exciting, that the reduction that's happened in phosphorus, phosphorus loading because of the adoption of these, these practices. So you can play around with these to get a sense. I can say just overall, what we've seen is that annually, 25% of the phosphorus that's from agriculture is, has been, or reduction has been met through the implementation of the field practices. So we're on target then to meet the TMDL based on what we're doing with agricultural, agricultural activity. And then the one last thing. And then just, just that also, if you want to know overall tracking and accounting, we got that too.
Thank you. If, all of you should have gotten in your packet a report from staff that concludes, and I think this is the action that we're looking to ratify, that concludes that the draft Northern Lake Champlain Tactical Basin Plan dated July 2020 is in conformance with and supportive of the goals, policies, and actions of the 2015 to 2023 Northwest Regional Plan. Is that correct, Catherine? Is that the action we're looking to try and achieve is ratification of this report?
Yes, it is. It's finding that it does conform to the plan, and also included in the report are some general comments on different sections, just for important information, but it's the overall conclusion that's most important.
So knowing that that's our, our end goal, I'll open up if anybody has some questions of Karen first.
I do.
Hi, Al, yes.
On, excuse me, on your report of Page Three, Section C. Ensure that residential development is clustered outside growth centers. What do you mean by outside growth centers?
So is this a, is this a description of?
This is the, this is the NRC report.
NRC. I'm sorry, one again, where is this?
On the NR, in our, in our report, it's Page Three, Section C.
So I don't have your report yet, do I? Or I haven't, I don't have that, I haven't looked at.
I'm addressing this to Catherine.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If I can find her.
Yeah, hi. Disappeared. I thought you were addressing it here.
Okay, back to it. Page Three.
Yes.
Section C. The first sentence, what was meant by the word outside?
It's outside, meaning outside of those areas that are shown in the regional plan as growth centers, downtowns, and villages.
Why? Why, Catherine?
So the idea is that the, if development is located outside of those areas, it should be clustered rather than dispersed so that it can lessen the impact on the landscape.
Okay, that's not what it says, though.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, I understand that's what you mean, but that isn't actually what it says.
It's not what I'm saying. That's actually what the regional plan says.
Okay.
So we should flag that for future.
We should flag that. We should change that.
I do.
Other questions or comments?
On, on the letter, Page, Page One on our report, we're going to change a couple of dates. Because the, the letter to the Vermont Agency of Natural Resources is now dated July 23rd, and has this meeting dated as July 30th.
Yes, we'll change the date to reflect the actual date.
Page One of the draft letter from NRPC to Vermont Agency of Natural Resources. The next last line at the bottom of the page, the, presented the review to the Board of Commissioners on 7:30 2020.
Did you get that, Amanda? Should be 7:29. Great.
Other questions? Can I get a motion to ratify the report of staff as amended here, including the plan conformance conclusion?
This is Bill Irwin. I so move that recommendations of staff regarding conformance of the draft Northern Lake Champlain Tactical Basin Plan B found in conformance with the Northwest Regional Plan.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Is that all of the action necessary on this topic?
It is, and I will, Karen, if you will send me the link to where people can find that, I'll send that out to the board so that you don't have to search for it on the state website, in case you're interested.
Yes.
Thank you, Catherine. Thank you for the presentation.
Kirk, this is Bob. I actually have one comment. While we just spent less than an hour playing with this, I'd like to recognize Karen and Amanda's and a number of the staff's time that went into getting us to this stage. It was not an easy task. Excellent work done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, and looking at the documents that we provided, that's very clear. Thank you, Bob, and thank you for your presentation, Karen, and thank you for the work that you're doing in this area.
All right, I'll sign off then, unless you need me.
No, you're welcome to sign off, but it's a public hearing, so you're welcome to stay on if you wish as well. We're going to move on to the commission reports. Finance and Operations, Harold?
Thank you, Kirk. The Finance Committee did not meet last, this month of July, but I believe, I suspect anyways, that we'll be meeting sometime in August or early September. Would that be a fair assessment? Catherine?
Based on the legislature, I anticipate it being into September.
Yes.
It'll be whenever the legislature adopts the full budget, we'll meet after that to review our budget and make any necessary adjustments.
Okay, thank you. I was assuming that we'd be meeting in the near future. Your profit and loss sheet, or your profit and loss budget is versus actual, and the year has ended, and if you look, you will see that, like on our income column, is only about 55% of all we budgeted, but if you go up to grants and aid pilot program, you see that most of that money, that 45% that's not showing, is in that one line item. And I believe some of that may be to billing, but also some that may also be to the fact that the coronavirus pandemic is probably, it has, everything is hard as everybody else. That being said, the expense is basically the same, and I look forward to the audit that will be coming up in the very near future, and And I anticipate, and I'm quite confident that we are going to look pretty good when this is all done.
Thank you Harold. Any questions for Harold? I, I think in our last meeting Catherine, didn't you say a big chunk of that grants and aid is because the extension had, the, the projects had been extended to October, so it'll show up. A lot of that money will show up in this fiscal year that didn't show up in last fiscal year?
Yes, that's correct. So the majority of that line item is actually construction grants for the statewide that we administer out of our office. And since that construction was in October of this year, most people, most towns did not get the construction done by June 30th, but that grant has been extended into FY '21.
And that's why there's such a great disparity between what came in and what we budgeted for because the projects haven't been done, so we haven't been paid.
And you'll see there's a corresponding hole on the expense side. We have 2.9 million that we didn't.
Yeah.
Anything else under Finance and Operations?
I just noticed on the balance sheet, I have a question. The people's money market would be 1020, 125,000. Is that, some of that money, projects have to be paid off or?
No, that are undesignedated. That's where we hold mostly, most of our undesignedated long-term reserves and our undesignedated reserves. And we use that, it gets a slightly higher interest rate than our regular checking account. So we use that to hold some of the funds that we then tap into for cash flow purposes.
Okay.
Anything else under Finance and Operations?
I should, that does, a couple lines down, I should highlight, we, nobody's ever asked about this, but we do have a union bank account that just shows up with no description on the balance sheet. And that is actually our revolving loan fund account that we have through Brownfield. So that is designated specifically for Brownfield to clean up and can only be used for those purposes.
I have a question of, for, about the building, but maybe I should wait till later in the meeting to ask it, Kirk.
Is it in relation to what you've presented on Finance and Operations, or is it a more general question?
It would probably involve money, yes.
Go for it.
Okay, my question would be to safely open the building back up for our employees that we have. And we all know we want to keep them as safe as possible. Are we going to have to put some kind of air filtration system in that building?
I don't know the answer to that question. It is nothing that has come up so far in terms of our discussions primarily because we have enough space for everybody to have an individual office. So as of right now, it hasn't come up.
Okay, I, I'm just looking, you know, Al, in the big box side that I know we want to keep everybody safe. And a lot of the places have to have this special air filtration system now for their employees. And I was just wondering if we may have to look into that and if so, have to budget it.
Yeah, it's a good question. I don't.
Is that something, does anybody know that could be handled by a freestanding air, air purification system? And, and if so, it should not be a huge expense. And I kind of second Harold. Even, even if it's above and beyond, it wouldn't be a bad idea to consider it. So I guess Catherine, we just asked, I know that you, and I've begun to review it. I know that you have put together, working with staff, working with state regulations and other requirements, say, I'll call it a phased reopen plan. If you could just take a look at whether you think this would be necessary.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me ask that question Kirk.
No problem. I'm going to move on to Personnel Committee. Is Joe on?
Joe was unable to make up, but Lori is the new chair.
Ah, so Lori.
Yes, we did not meet, but I have been in communication with Catherine. I think the second round interviews of three finalists were this morning for a Healthy Roots Coordinator. I hope that went well. The applicant pool seemed pretty deep and the three finalists looked, they all looked good to me on paper. And hopefully you're able to come to a consensus and choose somebody that's a good fit.
Any comments Catherine, or let it lie there?
Oh, yes. We, we did have three great second interviews today. We have amazing talent pool to choose from, and I'm confident we will find somebody really good to fill that vacancy.
Great, thank you. The Executive Committee did not meet in August, I mean in July. I expect we probably will meet in August, but haven't put together yet the agenda or the date. Project Review, Alicia?
Hi Kirk. Oh, Alicia there?
No, I was just saying.
She was earlier.
Step in for her.
Yeah, I, she's been in the chat there and I thought maybe she came back. But yeah, this is Bill Irwin. Alicia was at our meeting at this evening just before this and knew that she might have a conflict. So she prepared me to step in just in case. So we met this evening, the committee, and had two different projects presented to us. The first was the preliminary review for us on the Perrigo Corporation down in Georgia. This is a very significant project there. It's already a very large industrial complex that is for the manufacture of nutritional products. But they are, for lack of a better comparison, doubling at least the size of the footprint there and tripling the height of, of number of the buildings that are there. So it's a very large project that will take some time for our committee to absorb. So I appreciate Bethany getting us together a couple of weeks early before we have to vote on the project, whether it conforms with the regional plan and is of substantial regional impact. The second of the projects that we reviewed today was continuation of our review prior to COVID-19. And that was the City of St. Albans Hardak Recreation Area Swimming Pool Complex there. Many of you may have heard about the project there. It's a swimming pool, pool house, and some other amenities there to replace the one that's further closer to the lake. This went out by the Hardak Recreation Area that many have seen. This was voted on tonight to be of no substantial regional impact and yet still in compliance with our, conformance with our regional plan. And so that project has our approval to go on from the regional planning mission. That's our report from Project Review unless there's any questions.
Thank you Bill. Any questions for Bill? Thank you. Transportation Advisory Committee, Harold?
The Transportation Advisory Committee did not meet.
Energy Committee, Bob?
Energy Committee did not meet.
Brownfields Committee, Laz? I didn't see Laz on. In the report that was sent to you, the committee did meet on July 20th. They did approve funding for a project. You can read more about it there. I don't think any action is needed from the commission on this topic this evening. Is that correct Catherine?
That's correct.
Regional Plan Committee, Lynn?
We did not meet.
But you found something you want to change?
I did.
Vermont Economic Progress Council, Al?
The committee meeting, Betsy's meeting for tomorrow has been canceled.
Thank you. Green Mountain Transit, Bob?
I'll let Catherine cover that because I missed the last meeting.
I think we had elections, so we elected a chair to continue for one more year. It was Bonnie Woniger, who many of you know because she used to work with us. So she'll be the chair for another year. And then we have, we have established Equity and Diversity Committee of the Board. That's going to be working in conjunction with staff, leadership, and union leadership to make sure that we are doing what we can and should be doing to affirmatively address equity and diversity, both in our organization and among the customers we serve.
Clean Water Advisory Committee did not meet. Healthy Roots Advisory Committee, Brad?
Sure, thanks. There's some good notes in the packet there for everybody. I'd say the highlights being the nomination and election of Emily as Chair of the Advisory Committee. That'll help streamline processes and activities in organization moving forward. The other big news is the interviews that were taking place this week, which has already been touched on by Catherine. A lot of good candidates in that pool. And when we last met, the plan was hopefully to have someone hired in early September. In the June meeting, the major focus we had was budget adjustments for FY '22 to accommodate the challenges we anticipate facing due to COVID-19 and shifting our focus more towards larger grants and corporate partnerships and working on a sustainable business plan moving forward to help fundraising grow out of that. Those are the broad strokes.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Brad? The rest of the topics are for staff, I believe. Does staff want to give a report?
I'll give a report. Catherine's going to touch off on a lot of it, what, primarily what I've been working on this month, which is the Communications Union District. Catherine will be explaining more about that. It's been a huge time suck. Right now, we're under a little bit of a grant, like grant deadline to get that, to get some funding for that program. But that'll come later. I'll just say for, for the COVID, the start of the COVID stuff way back in March, we did a bit of work with helping Catherine and Bethany and staff work, you know, come up with some procedures and protocols for working remotely. We've had a lot of meetings with our IT person. You guys were talking about the building and concerns about the building. We've kind of, we've had a air, can't think of the word, an air conditioner installed in the server room that I kind of slapped together with some two by fours. I think something a little more permanent and maybe a little more secure, a little better might be in order if this is, if we're going to continue to do this, working remotely. That would be my concern. The server that we have is quite expensive and it is mission critical to do the work that we've been doing. I've had a review with our IT person just about every week to make sure that any, you know, try to forge, do some forecasting to see what we might need as this pandemic drags on. And I think that overall, we're in pretty good shape. But we, you know, we're constantly reassessing what our IT needs might be. Everything has been pretty seamless, you know, everything that we've done to this point to go into this situation has paid off in dividends. I think as far as remote work goes, we've been very, very successful. And just for regular business, again, back at the start of the pandemic, I scheduled a series of weekly meetings with a lot of the select board chairs, emergency management coordinators, fire rescue folks. We sort of had a series of weekly roundtables about three weeks into the stay at home order. And it was sort of, it was a great information sharing session among the municipalities and how everyone was trying to implement all the guidance that was coming down hot and heavy from ACCD and B Trans and everyone, and the Department of Health and everyone else, and trying to figure out how we're going to continue operations and how the municipalities are going to continue operations. We did quite a bit of the continuity of operations planning with some of the municipalities. It went really well. The information sharing was great. Nobody was afraid to ask questions. Everybody was learning new things. I was really happy with that. We're going to probably start those up again and do one every quarter, just sort of more information sharing as this thing drags out. And just for other issues that might come up, that communities may want to share with each other. We have, emergency management plans were due on May 1st with following town meeting. And we have eight, got two communities have adopted their plans. We were able to get three or four hazard mitigation plans adopted. Two were done this week, which was great, approved by FEMA. We also applied for some funding to do some ground truthing of public hot, Wi-Fi hotspots in the region. We'll be targeting municipal buildings and municipal buildings, nonprofits, libraries, schools. It's not a lot of funding. We'll be having mostly an intern do the work, and it's work that definitely needs to be done. The results of which I think the state's going to use to try to supplement what is missing or what is needed for connectivity. Our primary focus will be those communities that I, there was a survey that was sent out for this. I mean, I think there are a few communities that may just not have filled out the survey. Other communities, we're not sure if they just don't have any public Wi-Fi spots. So those will be our, our primary focus. The goal is to have at least two public Wi-Fi spots per community. And then assess, you know, the remainder. And I think that's pretty much it for me.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or follow up for Sean? Hearing none, I guess you're off the hook Sean. Catherine, did you have anything else you want to cover under the staff report portion?
I have a couple of things, and Amanda is also still.
Okay.
Do you want to go first Amanda?
Sure, I'll just highlight a few things, a lot of the things that I would, will update on are mentioned in the report. But one of the things I can bring your attention to under the water quality staff updates is that NRPC was notified by DEC that they are recommending NRPC be assigned to clean, as clean water service provider for both the Lemoyle River and the Mississauga Basin. Since that'll be a process that's going to go forward through this fall, as they will go through rulemaking. But that was exciting news to hear. And then in terms of other things that I'm working on is we have several different grants and funding through DEC and the Lake Champlain Basin Program to work on project development and really try to take some of those projects that, as Karen mentioned, there's this watershed project database at the state level that had a lot of projects listed in there that are just potentials from assessments. And I'm working through trying to connect with municipalities and other staff and see if those are viable and if they could be moved forward through some of the funding streams DEC has available. And other than that, we are in municipal planning grant outreach mode. So myself, Greta, and Emily Klaft are all reaching out to various municipalities to see if folks have projects that you want to be working on and putting a grant application in through October 1st. That's all I really have.
Thank you Amanda. Does anyone have any follow ups or questions for Amanda? Thank you, Amanda. Does anyone have any follow-ups or questions for Amanda? Okay, Catherine, it's all yours now.
And I don't have much left to say because I go last because everybody else takes care of big things. Besides what's on the agenda that we're going to talk about, a couple of other announcements. We did successfully work with the town of Albert to get an additional grant to help with the childcare project. So USDA gave a rural business opportunity grant to Albert and us to hire an actual construction project manager once that project is able to move forward. So that's one more piece of a very complicated project puzzle. So we're pretty excited to hear that. We are going to begin working on plans to onboard three and probably four new staff members over the next two months and figuring out how to do that effectively in our virtual environment and get them feeling part of the team. We have two new folks starting, one Eco AmeriCorps person, one AmeriCorps Vista person who you met at the June board meeting, and the Healthy Roots person that we've talked about hiring. And then the final spot is that we do have a temporary position built into the budget funded by our EDA grant, which I just got worked out today and signed off on. So we'll be working with Personnel Committee Chair on moving forward with that as well. So we'll be very busy bringing new team members on in this new world and figuring out how to do that effectively and efficiently. But I'm really excited about the folks that we know are coming onboard and the potential for the others. Then the final thing I'll just touch on, which you mentioned briefly, based on Harold's question, is we did come up with an office reopening plan. I would call it a soft reopening based on the guidance of the Governor's Office. Most people will still continue to work virtually and to telecommute, but we are going to be opening the office for those who need to be in there on a part-time basis or need to be in there to be more efficient and effective in their work. Though we've worked with staff to come up with a plan that meets the state guidelines as well as our personnel working preferences so that everybody feels comfortable. I expect there wouldn't be, you know, more than one or two, maybe three people in the office at any given time. And we are leaving it closed to the public. So it will just be staff that are going in there. And then just as a heads up to everybody, our staff really is doing an amazing job keeping things going. I hope you're finding everybody still to be fairly responsive, as if we were all in the office. But the reality is that everyone on our staff that has children, which is everybody but two, serves for one reason or another as the primary caregiver. And the two-day-a-week school is really going to continue to have an impact on our staff and their availability and the stress that that puts on them to try to juggle all of these changes. So they're adapting. They're doing it well. I've been really impressed. But our next crunch point is going to be really working with staff to make sure they don't get burnt out and that they do take some time to take a break and make sure that they give themselves a chance to catch a breath. So everybody's working hard, and we're going to adapt and keep on going.
Good job. I'm always impressed with you guys. It's an impressive bunch.
It is, indeed.
Does anyone have anything else they'd like to cover under Commission Reports before we move on? Hearing none, we'll move to Agenda Item 7. Agenda Item 7 is for us to approve municipal plans of Ennisburg Town and Village in North Hero as well as confirm them. For those of you that are new, this is a two-step process. The first is to approve a municipal plan based on a review of their conformance to the regional plan and state requirements. And then once that's affirmed, then we move on to step two, which is to confirm that the town is actively planning and which makes them eligible for various grants and that type of thing. We do have a group, a committee, that goes through, with staff, goes through these in detail. And there's checklists attached for each of these. I'm assuming someone is prepared to walk through a motion for the Ennisburg Town and Village and North Hero Municipal Plan approvals.
Yes, Kirk, I'm going to be doing that. This is Rowena.
Thank you, Rowena.
Are you ready for me?
We are ready.
Okay. So we did meet on Monday, and we had a public hearing. And then we also had a public hearing yesterday, Tuesday. And the committee did have a recommendation, and there's going to be three motions that I'm going to go through for the Town and Village of Ennisburg. And then there's two motions that I'll be looking for for the Town of North Hero. So for the Town, for Ennisburg Town and Village, the Plan Review Committee held a public hearing on July 27, 2020 at 5:30 PM to hear comments on whether the Ennisburg Town and Village Municipal Plan should receive regional approval. After deliberation, the Plan Review Committee hereby recommends to the Board of Regional Commissioners that the Ennisburg Town and Village Municipal Plan, as submitted and reviewed, receive regional approval in accordance with state statute. At this time, I'm looking for a motion to regionally approve the Ennisburg Town and Village Municipal Plan.
Can I get that?
This is Bill Irwin. I hope that Town of Ennisburg Regional Plan be granted regional approval.
This is Barkley. I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor, aye? Aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Okay. Then the second part is the confirmation of the planning program. After a public hearing and deliberation, the Plan Review Committee hereby recommends to the Board of Regional Commissioners that the Town, that the Ennisburg Town and Village Municipal Plan be granted regional confirmation in accordance with state statute. At this time, I'm looking for a motion to confirm the Ennisburg Town and Village continuing planning process.
This is Barkley. I'll make that motion. Barkley made the motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
And we've got a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay. So the Ennisburg Town and Village was also going for determination of energy compliance. The Plan Review Committee held a public hearing on July 27, 2020 at 5:30 PM to hear comments on whether the Ennisburg Town and Village Municipal Plan meets the requirements for a municipal enhanced energy plan in 24 VSA Section 4352. After deliberation, the Plan Review Committee hereby recommends to the Board of Regional Commissioners that the Ennisburg Town and Village Municipal Plan, as submitted and reviewed, receive an affirmation determination of energy compliance in accordance with state statute. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to find that the Ennisburg Town and Village Municipal Plan meets the standards for an affirmation determination of energy compliance and is in conformance with the Northwest Regional Plan.
Got a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Has the Energy Committee also reviewed this?
Amanda, did you have them look at it?
No, I did not. As I mentioned at the committee meeting, I contacted Bob and Bill after the fact, but we did not for that one have it lined up to have them review it.
I guess Bob or Bill, have you had a chance to look at it informally, and do you have any major issues?
This is Bill. I've not had.
As Bill was about to say, I have not reviewed it in detail, but they did use our checklist in the process of the review. And through that process, they had checked all the points that I would have checked also.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Go ahead, Bob. I mean, go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, just as a neighboring town, I've been aware of the energy planning taking place in Ennisburg. We did our planning near concurrent in Bakersfield, and we had the same regional planning staff member working with us. So I'm feeling comfortable that they've been doing a good job energy planning there, too.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Bill, a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay. So for the Town of North Hero, there's regional approval of the municipal plan and the confirmation of the planning program. So the first one is the Plan Review Committee held a public hearing on July 27, 2020 at 5:30 PM to hear comments on whether the North Hero Municipal Plan should receive regional approval. After deliberation, the Plan Review Committee hereby recommends to the Board of Regional Commissioners that the North Hero Municipal Plan, as submitted and reviewed, receive regional approval in accordance with state statute. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to regionally approve the North Hero Municipal Plan.
This is Barkley. I shall move. I get a second. Who gave the second?
Al Bojewell.
Thank you, Al.
Barkley and Al.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay. And then after a public hearing and deliberation, the Plan Review Committee hereby recommends to the Board of Regional Commissioners that the Town of North Hero be granted regional confirmation in accordance with the state statute. And at this time, I look for a motion to confirm North Hero's continuing planning process.
Got a motion? Can I get a second? Second from Harold?
Yep.
Any discussion, comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much for your detailed review and for walking us through the necessary motions.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item 8. As I discussed at the beginning of the meeting, this has become an actionable item for this evening. I think, you know, Catherine's going to give you a brief overview here, but at the end of the day, as we've worked through this COVID pandemic and the work from home and all of the changes that have come, it's really highlighted some inequities and some lack of broadband being available to people. And one potential solution is to work through Communications Union District to try and improve that in our region. And so Catherine, why don't you take over the discussion and lead us to the action that you're looking for?
Thanks, Kirk. So this has happened really fast. We went from not even having this conversation the last time we met to having a Communications Union District. So that went pretty quickly in the world of planning. So first, I wanted to start off by complimenting Sean and Emily Klaft on our staff for really stepping up and devoted a ton of time to this, and then extending a thank you to Sean Cago, our Ennisburg Fall and Town Representative and the Director of Economic Development, who also stepped up and spent a lot of time and was a great technical resource, get this going and will continue to be one as Ennisburg's representative. So the Communications Union District is a tool established in statute a couple of years ago, and it's a special purpose governmental union district. That's purpose is to enable, extend, build broadband to improve access to areas of the state that are unserved or underserved. It is an independent government organization once it's formed. The municipalities vote to form it. They appoint representatives, and then they have an organizational meeting and take it from there and act as an independent body. Last week on Monday night, Fairfax, Ennisburg, and Montgomery voted affirmatively to establish a Communications Union District. Ennisburg went first because they meet at 6:00, so they always get that. And so we have three municipalities now who are currently members of this Communications Union District. An organizational meeting has been set for next week. That will be the first meeting of the district to get things going. The immediate steps of the district are to apply for and hopefully receive very quickly a feasibility grant that will examine the cost and the strategies for extending broadband to the unserved areas, both in the district communities but in the areas surrounding that, and come up with, or building infrastructure to serve those areas. There are additional grants that are available to this district through the community foundation. There's a $10,000 grant that will support operations of the Communication Union District. And then there's $100,000 available through the state share of the HERS Act funding that the legislature has allocated to Communication Union Districts. So there's a lot of funding that's available initially to help this district start to get to work. And then we expect that additional funding will come through the years to help support future work of the district. The three municipalities currently have voted to join this district, but we also know that Albert, Berkshire, Georgia, Highgate, Bakersfield, and Richford have potential interest as well. That's just the ones we've talked to so far. We're working our way through and hearing from towns, both reaching out and hearing. So the work continues. The district can continue to evolve. Right now, it's established as a standalone district, but moving down the road, it may be that it makes sense to join with a neighboring district or to come up with a different geography of the district. But by at least establishing it now, we've got our, we've got a place to go for funders to come to our region to help support the expansion of infrastructure. That is a quick overview.
Great. And the action you're looking for this evening would be?
So the Vermont Community Foundation, as I mentioned, is interested in giving $10,000 organizational support grants to Communications Union Districts because our district is just very nascent and is in the beginnings of forming. Northwest Regional Planning Commission can serve as a fiscal agent to hold that money, and then 100% of that can go toward the operations of the Communications Union District. But because it doesn't have an EIN yet or hasn't had some organizational meeting, they're interested in NRPC serving as a fiscal agent, but that does require a vote of the Board to agree to do that.
So the motion would be for the Board to act as the fiscal agent for the newly-formed Communications Union District?
Yes.
Until, I guess, until something changes?
Until the union is ready.
Any questions of Catherine? If not, could I get a motion to approve that the Northwest Regional Planning Commission act as the fiscal agent for the Communications Union District that was just formed?
No move.
I've got a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? I would just, I would just like to thank staff and Catherine for being nimble here and moving quickly, meeting with the select boards quickly. You know, I think this is an opportunity to, to improve. You know, I, I think this is an opportunity to, to improve an area that we've talked about a lot in planning, which is our broadband and communications infrastructure in the region. Any other comments or questions?
One of the amazing things is we were able to do that, three select boards in one night with, with Zoom. It was pretty amazing.
Yes. Zoom, Zoom, Zoom has its advantages, for sure. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Abstentions? Motion passes. Good work. Item number nine, Commissioner announcements. Does anyone, anyone have anything they'd like to raise during this portion of the agenda?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Al, go ahead.
I'm a member of the Northwest Medical Center Board of Incorporators. And on Monday night, we had an extensive overview of the hospital's financial situation and their relationship with the Green Mountain Care Board and One Care. The hospital is being significantly controlled, finances are significantly controlled by the state. And their precarious position of not having, be able to fund everything that they've been doing in the past and having to slow down or get rid of some of their services impacts our community. One of the questions that arose was what happens if the hospital fails? Well, this is, should be significant to our region for many reasons, but mostly from my point of view, people who live in Richford or Ennisburg, Franklin or Alberg, if they get sick and have to be transported by ambulance to Northwest, to Burlington, UVM Medical Center, they, many of those who are seriously, it won't make it. It's essential we maintain our community hospital. To that degree, we really, the hospital needs now community support to address their comments and their worries directly to the Green Mountain Care Board and to the governor. This is a critical situation. The Green, the hospital board and management, I've been working with Green Mountain Care Board, but they're working with a very insensitive board to the needs of our community. So we have to step up to the plate and help. And so I would ask that Catherine and the, and the commissioners, have this hospital come to us next meeting to discuss their situation and how we might best intervene into this process to help the hospital survive.
Thank you, Al. It certainly is an important topic. Catherine, can you look into whether it would be possible to add that to our next meeting's agenda? And we'd have appropriate representation from the hospital?
Yeah, I will say in response to some emails from Al, I did already reach out to the hospital and had a conversation with Jonathan Billings today, who is their Vice President for Public, I think is his title. There's a couple of ways that he thought NRPC could be helpful. One is that definitely coming to a board meeting and talking just about hospital operations and the realities of what's changed and what hasn't. And then when they are before the Green Mountain Care Board, he said they would be reaching out directly to us to share some information about building community support for their request. He's, did, he did assure me that the hospital is not in danger of closing at this point, that they, they're still managing operations, but they are definitely, we shouldn't sugarcoat their budget challenges, but in any way.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Al.
Welcome.
Quick question, Kirk.
Yes?
Usually in August, we don't meet, but do we have a meeting next month? Nothing to me, I'm just asking.
So Catherine and I discussed this briefly. At this point, we were not planning on having an August meeting and like we normally don't. And having, you know, a meeting in September, you know, because of how fast we'd need to respond because of COVID-19 and others, I was keeping that option open for another week or so to make sure Catherine and I are tied out that we don't need a meeting. But we'll get that information out to you as soon as we can.
Very good. Thank you.
We can all use a summer break. Any other discussion topics? Hearing none. I want to thank all of you for your active participation. This is not an easy way to hold meetings like this, and, and we do lose something, but we're still getting the business done. So thank you to everyone for that. And can I get a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Opposed? I don't need an abstention here. Thank you, everyone, and have a nice evening.